Our pledge of allegiance.
Pledge allegiance. To the United States and where to the Republic, which stands one nation under God, being visible with liberty and justice.
Please bow your heads and join me for the Lord's Prayer. Our Father, who art in heaven, hallowed be thy name, thy kingdom come, that will be done on earth as it is in heaven. Give us this day our daily bread, and forgive us our trespasses, as we forgive those who trespass against us. Lead us not into temptation, but deliver us from evil.
Okay, good morning. Welcome to the regular meeting, June 12th. Our next public workshop, we have a change here to note. Will be next, uh, two Mondays from now. There's no meeting next week, no workshop next week. Uh, so the next public workshop will be on Monday, June 24th at 10:30 a.m. in this room, Monday. And then our next regular meeting will be on Friday, June 28th at 10:30 a.m. also in this room. Um, because of previous obligations in DC. We had to make an adjustment there. We don't want to go three weeks without a meeting, so. Uh, it'll be Monday and Friday, the 24th and the 28th. Madam Clerk.
Mr. Cantala Mesa.
Here.
Ms. Frenchco.
Here.
Mr. Malloy.
Here.
Item number one is to dispense with reading the minutes of the workshop session dated June 4th, 2024, and the regular meeting dated June 5th, 2024, and accept and approve the video recordings of both meetings as the official meeting minutes.
Motion to approve.
Second that.
Um, and I want to have some discussion on this. In order to be able to use, uh, audio or video as your official record, you have to make sure the clerk is supposed to certify that everyone says their name before they speak and that there are no skipping of the videos. And that there has to be a transcript that indicates who's speaking before they're speaking as well. And there is no such thing being done. It's on YouTube. And there's an ability to hit on YouTube to, to see it in writing, but those, there are typos, you can't see who's speaking, and that is absolutely incorrect. And I really wish the board would do that for ease of the public who wants to have access to minutes because there are no properly kept meeting minutes.
Mr. Cantala Mesa.
Yes.
From Malloy.
Yes.
Ms. Frenchco.
Um, because they're incorrect now.
Item number two is to approve the bills.
Uh, motion to approve.
Second.
Mr. Cantala Mesa.
Yes.
Mr. Malloy.
Yes.
Ms. Frenchco.
Yes.
Item number three is to approve additional appropriations.
Motion to approve.
Second that.
Mr. Cantala Mesa.
Yes.
Mr. Malloy.
Yes.
Ms. Frenchco.
Yes.
Item number four is to approve transfer of appropriations.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Mr. Cantala Mesa.
Yes.
Mr. Malloy.
Yes.
Ms. Frenchco.
Yes.
Item number five is to receive and place on file the monthly activities report for the Trumbull County Dog Kennel for the month of May, 2024.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Mr. Cantala Mesa.
Yes.
Mr. Malloy.
Yes.
Ms. Frenchco.
Yes.
Item number six is to receive and record on the journal for record purposes, the rider to the Public Official Bond number 66923229 for Marilyn Pape as Executive Director of Trumbull County Children's Services. The bond given in favor of the Trumbull County Probate Court has been revised to change the bond amount to $100,000 commencing May 9th, 2024.
Motion to approve.
Second that.
Mr. Cantala Mesa.
Yes.
Mr. Malloy.
Yes.
Ms. Frenchco.
Yes.
Item number seven is to authorize Danny Malloy, President of the Board of Trumbull County Commissioners, to execute amendment number three to the fiscal year 2024 Ohio Department of Youth Services Juvenile Court Grant Agreement. Amendment number three is necessary to realign funds for staff positions currently on the grant. The youth subsidy grant, Fund Number 112, operates from July 1st, 2023 through June 30th, 2025.
Motion to approve.
Second that.
Mr. Cantala Mesa.
Yes.
Mr. Malloy.
Yes.
Ms. Frenchco.
Yes.
Item number eight is to receive and place on file for record purposes, the 2023 Gerard Municipal Court Report as submitted by the Honorable Judge Jeffrey D. Adler, and to forward a copy of said report to the Trumbull County Auditor.
Uh, motion to approve.
Second.
Mr. Cantala Mesa.
Yes.
Mr. Malloy.
Yes.
Ms. Frenchco.
Yes.
Item number nine is to approve the earning, earning of compensatory time by Trumbull County employees to go outside the work area to serve the public by working the Commissioner's booth during the Trumbull County Fair, as well as any Commissioner's booth during the 2024 festival season.
A motion to approve.
Second the motion.
I think we need to have this discussion about this. It, this item, I don't know who wrote it, but it doesn't even explicitly say which festivals that you're participating in during the season. Which ones are they?
Uh, this just gives permission for them to get comp time on any that we should choose in the future.
Great. So, um, one of the things that I thought was necessary to look at before, uh, the board would continue doing this. And I requested it, but, but staff did not provide it was to have, uh, the amount of comp time that was earned by commissioners or HR, uh, anyone under the Commissioner's Office. The amount of comp time, their hourly pay rate uh, fro- from last year, so that you could at least know the financial impact that the taxpayers are paying for for employees to go to festivals and participate in fairs. Uh, additionally, I think that it would be beneficial if the board in effort to, if you do choose to have staff at events, you could approve flex time, which would allow the employees to flex their time in order to reduce any additional compensatory time. And that would mean, I, I don't, if you guys are not familiar with that, do you know what flex time is?
Yeah, when we were stressed already, we're, we're short-staffed as it is. The flex time would be taking away from the regular duties during the week and replacing it with the time spent, uh, out with the public. We, we don't have any time to replace, we're short-staffed as it is.
I think we need to do it, and, and I'm gonna bring this up just in this discussion, because it's relevant, is to have a, uh, performance audit from the state, because I don't believe that we're necessarily short-staffed. If you, if you look at the fact that the Commissioner's Office used to type out meeting minutes for a workshop and for a regular meeting.
And for the first year that I was here, we paid overtime for that, up to 12 hours a week sometimes.
They used to type up, uh, they used to type up the, the meeting minutes. They no longer do that. They used to have to draft the agenda items. They no longer do that. There's now a new system in place. The collaboration software allows them to just copy and paste.
No.
So the ability, the point of order for constitutionally, uh, President, the, the only, the executive members of the board are to be talking during discussion. General members have to wait until the end of the meeting. That's a violation. I'd like you to call a roll on allow, on whether that's allowable.
That wasn't discussion. That wasn't a talk. She expressed an emotion, uh, a grunt.
If you're not.
Of displeasure, I, the lie you were saying.
The board meeting is.
Mr. Chairman, I call the question on, on agenda item 10.
Questions have been called, discussion ends. According to Roberts Rules of Order.
So this is item number nine.
I'm sorry, item number nine.
Mr. Cantala Mesa.
Yes.
Mr. Malloy.
Yes.
Ms. Frenchco.
Uh, because the board has not even calculated the financial impact of the, on the taxpayers to send employees to walk around and see animals and participate in things such as meatball eating contests on the courthouse square. I, I just don't think that we, I think it's irresponsible to do this. And if you do choose to do it, you should consider flex time so that there is no additional financial impact.
Get your vote, get your name.
No, and, uh, um, if you look at the way the meetings minutes are supposed to be, I'm sorry, the way the record of the commissioners' meetings are supposed to be recorded in the revised code. It's supposed to reflect the reason why there's a dissenting vote, if there is one, and to date, uh, the clerk hasn't done that.
Yes, I have done that. Yes, I have. You're not looking.
Again, points of.
He's allowed to answer your question. And you're accusing her of something, I will grant her the liberty to be able to answer back if it's a false, if you're stating a false statement. She's allowed to defend herself.
That's not, you don't, that's not how the Roberts Rule.
Questions have been called, next one. Discussion's over.
Item number 10 is to approve and execute contract with Matrix Point Software LLC for the purchase of Matrix Prosecutor Software for use by the Trumbull County Prosecutor's Office in the amount of $115,000, and to authorize the payment of the monthly hosting and licensing fee in the amount of $6,825 per month using the same accounts referenced.
Motion to approve.
Second the motion.
Did this was, this was, um, gone through data board as well, right? I heard, I heard the discussion about everything that happened, but I, I am aware that it has, has to go through that if it relates to IT, and I just wanted to make sure.
Mr. Cantala Mesa.
Wait, hold on. Mr. Danzo's gonna approach. She didn't see that commissioner, she didn't see that.
Okay, I didn't see him getting up.
Shut your mouth. Don't tell me to shut.
Commissioner, knock off the language like that. Knock out the language. You're nipping. Moving forward, Mr. Danzo has a floor.
On constitutionality, no one who's not a member of the executive board is permitted to be talking during.
Okay, you need to follow the rules too, and you're out of order with the stuff. You're nipping again, and we're gonna shut it down. Mr. Danzo.
This, this has not gone through the data board. This software is for internal use by our office. It's not gonna be a countywide use software. Um, we have worked with the IT department on it. They're aware of this, this software for us, but it has not gone through the data board.
Doesn't it have to procedurally? Because I, I was under the impression that anything that deals with the, the data, IT, anything that relates to that has to go through the data board to be approved, even if it's a computer. You know, a, a, anything that relates to that has to go through there to be approved, and then we could buy it.
Traditionally, I think for department software, that hasn't been the case, but if the.
It did, because even John Gargano came up and acknowledged last week that he, he did the proper procedure, and I just wanted to make sure, that's all.
We didn't do it for the 911 system data software for their CADs, and we didn't do it for the Sheriff's Department, jail administration.
Like me to explore that with the data board. I have no problem doing it. I, I, you know, but again, my understanding has been for internal office software that that hasn't always been the case, so. I, you know, again, we could look into it if that's what, if that's what the commissioners want to do.
I'm ready to proceed. I mean, we've discussed it since budget hearings.
Right, this, this, yeah, this, yeah.
And so I thought maybe it made its way up there since then.
Well, like I said, I, I, I mean, I'd be happy to explore it, even if the commissioners want to approve the, the budgetary part of this, this today. We can still, I can still explore it with the data board personnel. I have no problem with that.
The proper channels, because I wouldn't, I, that's all I just wanna.
Well, we want to do it the right way too. I've, I've no problem looking into it, but again, you know, I, that's, that's something I think traditionally that hasn't always been done with department level. We'll look into it. Uh, but if the commissioners are inclined to approve the actual item today for the budgetary process, uh, you know.
So you're saying if we could approve it, um, contingent on going through the.
No, the majority of the board thinks if you're okay the way it is, if you voluntarily want to run it through the system to double check, you're more than welcome to, but the majority of the board is happy with it as it is.
Procedurally, it goes through them before it comes to us. Right?
Okay, I, if that's what you're telling me, I, again, on department level software, I'm not sure that that's the case, but.
Even if it's department level, they still run through.
Sure. And, and again, the, the IT department has been involved in this, so it's not, you know, there's nothing that's trying to be done without their knowledge and consent.
I just want to make sure that it went through the, the right.
Have you ever gone to a data board meeting? In your four years? Never? Just asking.
Mr. Cantala Mesa.
Yes.
From Malloy.
Yes.
Ms. Frenchco.
Uh, I wanna just abstain because I'm not sure that the procedure went in order because it didn't go through data.
Item number 11 is to authorize the renovation of the Trumbull County Prosecutor's Office Library into a modern conference room with remote conferencing capability in the amount of $30,000.
A motion to approve.
Second the motion.
Mr. Cantala Mesa.
Yes.
Mr. Malloy.
Yes.
Ms. Frenchco.
Yes.
Item number 12 is to concur with the Trumbull County Engineer to close the following roadways, Hoffman Norton Road, County Highway 213 in Farmington Township between Bristol Champion Town Line Road and State Route 88 for paving. And those closing dates are Monday, June 10th through Friday, June 14th, and Stroop Hickox Road, County Highway 217 in Farmington Township between Yonk Portage Easterly Road and Houselcraft Road for road paving. And the closing date for that one is Monday, June 17th through Friday, June 21st.
A motion to approve.
Second.
Mr. Cantala Mesa.
Yes.
Mr. Malloy.
Yes.
Ms. Frenchco.
Yes.
Item number 13 is to concur with the county engineer to grant the special annual supplier fleet permit for fleet vehicles requested by the company listed, JGF Trucking, Inc.
A motion to approve.
Second.
Mr. Cantala Mesa.
Excuse me, yes.
Mr. Malloy.
Yes.
Ms. Frenchco.
Yes.
Item number 14 is to concur with the county engineer to grant the right-of-way permits requested by the companies listed. And there are two for Dominion East, Ohio, and CNS Networks on behalf of Bright Speed.
A motion to approve.
Second it.
Mr. Cantala Mesa.
Yes.
Mr. Malloy.
Yes.
Ms. Frenchco.
Yes.
Item number 15 is to adopt the submitted residential anti-displacement and relocation assistance plan provided by the Ohio Department of Development. The anti-displacement and relocation assistance plan is required by all community development block grant, CDBG grantees, prior to funding and must be updated every five years whether or not demolition activities are planned. And to authorize the President of the Board of Commissioners, Danny Malloy, to sign and execute the submitted residential anti-displacement and relocation assistance plan.
A motion to approve.
Second.
Mr. Cantala Mesa.
Yes.
Mr. Malloy.
Yes.
Ms. Frenchco.
Yes.
Item number 16 is to authorize change order number two as a final adjustment of quantities for the contract with Boakensons, Inc., for the Trumbull County Planning Commission Building Roof Replacement Project awarded on September 13th, 2023, and to authorize Danny Malloy, President of the Board, to sign change order number two on behalf of the board. Change order number two is a final adjustment of quantities and reduces the original contract amount from $325,209 to $324,661.84 as the project is substantially complete as of May 31st, 2024, per David Ruse, Project Manager, Strollo Architects.
A motion to approve.
Second.
Mr. Cantala Mesa.
Yes.
Mr. Malloy.
Yes.
Ms. Frenchco.
Yes.
Item number 17 is to approve and execute the agreement with Hill Barth and King LLC to perform accounting services in the amount of $13,200. The number of grants secured and administered varies from year to year. However, most of the grant funds originate with a federal HUD Community Development Block Grant Program. The agreement is in effect starting July 1st, 2024 through June 30th, 2025, and is a continuation of services provided by the firm of the county. Uh, two other firms were sent a request for proposal, and the other firms were A, A Domico Company LLC and HD Growth Partners.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Discussion. Um, Mr. Danzo, I have a question. Um, I, it's my understanding that when there's a request for a proposal, uh, that it is advertised and that you do not send it just to specific individuals. Am I wrong?
Um, I, I guess I'll first preface this by saying what I usually say. It's really not something that we normally do to stand up and give on-the-spot legal advice at meetings. But what I would say, and I'm sorry, I was, I was looking into something else when this came up. Which, which agenda item was this?
17. It's not a, a large dollar amount, but at the end of the day, if, if you, if there's, my understanding and the way I would have done it is if there's a request for proposals or a request for qualifications to advertise it, you don't just send it to a few people.
Well, do, do we know that we didn't advertise it, and these weren't the three that requested packet sent to them?
Yes, we do. So go ahead.
This contract, as I understand, is, is less than $75,000. So the process then is up to the board. Traditionally, what we've done, even when the threshold was 50,000, 25,000, anything less than the threshold is really the discretion of the board, how they handle it. There have been times where the board chooses to do a competitive bidding process, even though it's not required. There have been times where they've done informal requests for quotes.
Yeah.
But there is absolutely nothing that prohibits going out and talking to three firms and getting three price quotes individually, if that's what the board wants to do. Uh, in fact, really legally speaking, apart from the board's policy that says three price quotes, there really isn't any legal process for a, a contract under 75,000. So, no, there is no, there is no requirement that you go out and advertise and do all that kind of stuff. That's really reserved legally speaking for competitive bidding. It's not for the amounts under that.
When we, when we do that with our board, it's a request for quotes if it's under that threshold, and this was a request for proposals. So those, do you see what I'm saying?
Those words get interchanged for whatever reason. Again, under the law, 75,000 is the threshold. If you're under that, i- it's really the discretion of the board, and what you call it really doesn't matter as long as you follow whatever process the board has set forth for that.
Okay, I, I, oh. And then, related to discussion, um, there's a, and I don't know if it involves you or not, but one of the names was Dezenzo that was a signatory for the company that they're contracting with, and that's also the last name of a person who's on the planning commission. So I just don't know if there's a relationship there.
I, I have no idea. I.
Okay.
That would be a question for that person, I guess.
Yeah, it would be nice if, when things came over the, okay, all right, thank you.
Mr. Cantala.
The other, the other thing for, for discussion is, this is something that I don't, that I don't believe that you need to have a consultant do. It is basic accounting for grants. Uh, staff normally does that. There, there is a lar- the staff, since I've been here, has continued to grow, that there are people who, um, make more than the commissioners there, and doing this basic function of accounting for a grant uh, is something that some, that, that doesn't necessarily warrant, um, an agreement with a accounting firm. It's just basic reporting on grant management. So I just, I even question that, so. The need for that, when you have staff that's capable of doing it.
Hey, for item 17, Mr. Cantala Mesa.
Yes.
Mr. Malloy.
Yes.
Ms. Frenchco.
Uh, because I believe that the staff is capable of doing basic grant accounting reporting, and, um, I saw the same name on the contract as a name of, uh, a member of the commission. It, it causes me some pause.
Spelled exactly the same. You're 100% sure, or you just speculate and trying to muddy somebody up?
I, I, I.
You don't know how to spell it?
Okay, again, I'm voting, don't interrupt. Because of those reasons, I am voting no. Even, even without that, it's something that the staff could do. It's not, it's not hard.
Item number 18 is to authorize Mauro Cantala Mesa, Trumbull County Commissioner, to delegate Gary E. Newbrow, PE, Trumbull County Sanitary Engineer, to electronically execute the payment instruction form with the Ohio Water Development Authority for the Yankee Lake Sanitary Sewer Improvements Project, loan number 10563.
A motion to approve.
Second.
Mr. Cantala Mesa.
Yes.
Mr. Malloy.
Yes.
Ms. Frenchco.
There, there, we are the Board of Commissioners. We're the people who should be signing and overseeing payments. And to have an employee do that from their cell phone.
These are payouts and paydowns that we've already approved.
Right, then, then, then the staff should be, then the staff should be doing it. I still believe the Board of Commissioners needs to do that. That's.
Commissioner, for three years it happened that way, and you were fine with it. It's just now in six months changed.
All right. Don't interrupt.
But I'm just telling you, you were, you were doing it the former way for, for three years.
Yeah, moving on.
Voting time. You need to shut your mouth unless it's time for you to talk. Okay. Try to follow the procedure.
Your vote?
I explained the reason why before I was rudely interrupted and, and before the president didn't call, um, him out for interrupting, and it is no.
Motion passes.
Item number 19 is to authorize Gary E. Newbrow, PE, Sanitary Engineer, to issue the notice of, to proceed to Utility Contracting, Inc., for the Almonds Wastewater Treatment Plant Replacement Project, known as County Project Number 9-S-20 in Newton Township with the Trumbull County Combined Sanitary Sewer District Metropolitan Subdistrict.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Mr. Cantala Mesa.
Yes.
From Malloy.
Yes.
Ms. Frenchco.
Yes.
Item number 20 is to approve a school resource officer agreement between the Trumbull County Commissioners, Trumbull County Sheriff. Trumbull County Sheriff Paul Monroe, and the Bloomfield Mespo Local School District Board of Education for police protection and services for the Bloomfield Mespo Local School District, its buildings and activities, personnel, students, and public on site for the twenty twenty-four, twenty twenty-five academic fiscal school year, July first, twenty twenty-four through June thirtieth, twenty twenty-five. The Bloomfield Mespo Local School District agrees to pay the Trumbull County Sheriff's Office sixty-three thousand, five hundred seventy-eight dollars and fifty-eight cents, and the sheriff agrees to furnish one deputy.
Motion approved.
Second the motion.
Mr. Cantalamaesa?
Yes.
Mr. Malloy?
Yes.
Ms. Frenchco?
Um, I, I wanted to have a bit of discussion. So on these, these items, there is no accounting for any of the soft costs. They don't charge for equipment, depreciation of vehicles, or, um, and it doesn't account for any of the changes in contract for the costs of the, um, of the deputy who, who's going to be there. Um, I really want to suggest publicly to, they did in, in one case, I think that there are agreements with the, the, the townships. They added an extra ten percent to cover, um, some of the mileage and some of the other costs. But at, at the same time, even though they're not driving the car, um, there's still a depreciation that's associated with the equipment that's used, and I think that they need to capture that within their contracts just to make sure that the costs are covered. Um, because if that doesn't occur, then in essence, everyone in Trumbull County is subsidizing a small portion of these agreements. So that's something that I would encourage the sheriff, um, to do. And, um, because that's not done, and I'm not sure if the costs are covered because they don't break that down when they give it to, to us, I want to abstain.
The soft costs are covered in this. It's been told to us by the sheriff and the majors many, many times here with all the other school districts. If you look at this amount compared to last year's amount, you'll see the increase there is to cover the soft costs that are in there. The taxpayers already pay for everything on that sheriff's body, including his uniform and his gun. It's all, they're paid for by, by our general tax dollars and, and general fund dollars. So we're already paying once, and you want this, you want them to pay again for something they've already paid for to provide a service. We're not going to defund the police. You're not going to grandstand over this one. We, it's already been told and you would have heard multiple times.
This was the vote, and it wasn't time for a discussion, and that was my reason for voting no. Uh, you continue to violate the rules of order. If you don't know how to follow them, then maybe you should step down as being president of the board again.
Um, when you make up lies, I'm going to correct them as president.
The, but, that's not how that works. If you, that's not how that works, but you don't know how things work, so I ca, I can't fix that. Um, no, I, I have an email from, um, one of the, the person who prepared the contract from the sheriff's department, and they acknowledged that they do not have any cost for vehicles.
Where's the email then? Why don't you provide that? Because you're throwing a lot of speculation. I'll provide that to the board.
Speculation, why don't you ask actual, do your due diligence and ask those questions and you'd find it out too, but you don't.
I've sat down with the sheriff and went over the whole breakdown of it.
Reverend Stamp and I got an email that responded to me that says that they don't cover that because the vehicles are
They don't cover the vehicle. I, that's all they said. All the rest of it is covered.
Well, and that they didn't account for any increases either. So go ahead. I got my, I do my due diligence where I ask additional questions, but you don't, so just keep voting. That's fine. The vote's called.
Okay, so your vote is?
I already said it. I already said it. So.
Item number twenty-one is to approve a school resource officer agreement between the Trumbull County Commissioners, Trumbull County Sheriff Paul Monroe, and Trumbull County Career and Technical Center for police protection and services for the Trumbull County Career and Technical Center, its buildings and activities, personnel, students, and public on site for the twenty twenty-four, twenty twenty-five academic fiscal school year, July first, twenty twenty-four through June thirtieth, twenty twenty-five. Trumbull County Career and Technical Center agrees to pay the Trumbull County Sheriff's Office one hundred twenty-seven thousand, one hundred and fifty-seven dollars, sixteen cents, and the sheriff agrees to furnish two deputies.
Motion approved.
Second.
Mr. Cantalamaesa?
Yes.
Mr. Malloy?
Yes.
Ms. Frenchco?
For the same reason, which is that there's no accounting done or, um, consideration of vehicles to make sure that all of the costs are covered and we weren't provided that additional, any information to prove that. I'm abstaining because I want to be able to be certain that every bit of the costs are covered, including vehicle appreciation. So I'm abstaining again.
Motion passes. Number twenty-
Item number twenty-two is to reappoint Attorney Rachel E. Nader as a member of the Trumbull County Mental Health and Recovery Board for the term commencing July first, twenty twenty-four through June thirtieth, twenty twenty-eight.
Motion approved.
Second that.
Mr. Mr. Cantalamaesa?
Yes.
Mr. Malloy?
Yes.
Ms. Frenchco?
Yes.
Item number twenty-three is to reappoint Mr. Thomas Harwood as a member of the Trumbull County Mental Health and Recovery Board for the term commencing July first, twenty twenty-four through June thirtieth, twenty twenty-eight.
Motion approved.
Second that motion also.
And, and then I wanted, I just want to mention generally about Mental Health and Recovery Board. Um, it's there, they need to get their, they brought this up before. They need to get their renewal on. So, uh, um, I don't know where that's standing. I bel, I, if they took all the steps that they needed to, if the auditor's office has worked with them, but I, I would like to see them get their information and for that renewal so that it could be done in time.
Mr. Cantalamaesa?
Yes.
Mr. Malloy?
Yes.
Ms. Frenchco?
Yes.
Item twenty-four is to release Mrs. Deborah Tominey as a member of the Trumbull County Mental Health and Recovery Board effective June thirtieth, twenty twenty-four. Mrs. Tominey has completed the maximum eight years of service on the board pursuant to O R C Section three forty. The Board of Trumbull County Commissioners joins April Caraway, Executive Director of the Trumbull County Mental Health and Recovery Board, in thanking Mrs. Tominey for her faithful service and commitment to the board. Mrs. Tominey's expertise and dedication is greatly appreciated.
Motion approved.
Second.
Mr. Cantalamaesa?
Yes.
Mr. Malloy?
Yes.
Ms. Frenchco?
Yes.
Item number twenty-five is to execute a letter of support to Access Point Community Health Centers for the Health Resources and Services Administration's Fiscal Year, twenty twenty-four Behavioral Health Services Expansion Grant, which will expand mental health and substance use disorder services, including treatment with medications for opioid use disorder in Trumbull and Mahoning Counties, and to authorize Danny Malloy, President, to execute said letter on behalf of the Board of Commissioners.
Motion approved.
Second.
Mr. Cantalamaesa?
Yes.
Mr. Malloy?
Yes.
Ms. Frenchco?
Yeah.
Item number twenty-six is to adopt a resolution authorizing expenditure for responding to or mitigating the public health emergency from American Rescue Plan Act Funds, ARPA, Howland Historical Society, and down toward the bottom, Commissioners, a one-time grant to the association in the amount of three thousand dollars to be used to replace the lost funding experienced by the society as a result of the pandemic.
Motion approved.
Second.
Mr. Cantalamaesa?
Yes.
Mr. Malloy?
Yes.
Ms. Frenchco?
Yeah.
Item num, item number twenty-seven is to enter into an agreement between the Board of Trumbull County Commissioners and the Howland Historical Society, as approved by ARPA Legal Counsel, to provide funds for revenue replacement as fully described in Exhibit A, and the Board of Trumbull County Commissioners allocates the sum of three thousand dollars to Howland Historical Society.
Motion approved.
Second.
Mr. Cantalamaesa?
Yes.
Mr. Malloy?
Yes.
Ms. Frenchco?
Yes.
Item number twenty-eight, to approve or deny the bridge name change in support of the Hubbard City Number Five Bridge, S F N seven eight three one five zero one, being renamed World War One and World War Two Veterans Memorial Bridge in honor of veterans who have served in World War One and World War Two. The Hubbard City Number Five Bridge is located on East Park Avenue in the city of Hubbard. Public hearing was held today, six twelve, twenty twenty-four, prior to the Commissioners' meeting at ten A M.
Motion approved.
Can you clear your motion up a little more? Motion-
Motion to approve the bridge name change in support of the Hubbard City Number Five Bridge, S F N seven eight three one five zero one, being renamed World War One and World War Two Veterans Memorial Bridge in honor of veterans who have served in World War One and World War, World War Two. Hubbard City Number Five Bridge is located on East Park Avenue in the city of Hubbard.
I'll second it.
Ms. Frenchco?
Yes.
Mr. Cantalamaesa?
Yes.
Mr. Malloy?
Yes.
Uh, motion to enter executive session. Wait, are we there? That's not changed. Okay. Um, motion to enter executive session pursuant to a higher vice code one two one point two two G one to consider the discipline of one, wait, of two sanitary engineer public employees.
I'll second it.
Ms. Frenchco?
Okay. Uh, yes.
Cantalamaesa?
Yes.
Mr. Malloy?
Yes.
And I only received information, we, on, we're going to have the information on the second one, right? Okay, because I, I read the first. Okay.
We'll be back shortly.
We'll be back shortly.
Make a motion to reconvene from executive session pursuant to Ohio Vice Code 121.22G4 to consider the discipline of two sanitary engineer public employees. It's my motion.
Second that.
Mr. Cantala Mesa.
Yes.
Mr. Malloy.
Yes.
Ms. Frenchco.
Yes.
Item thirty-one is to approve and ratify the personnel action for a three and a ten day suspension without pay for employee number one of the Tremble County Sanitary Engineers Department. The employee will serve the suspensions from Monday, July first to Wednesday, July third and Friday, July fifth to Thursday, July eighteenth.
Make a motion to approve.
Second that.
In discussion, I just have one question. Are we, in some cases, they put the names, in some cases, they don't for promotions, for anything that relates to pay. For journal purposes, aren't we supposed to have names?
I, I have to, I'd have to look and see, I know in some cases, the, for exec, the executive session, for example, I believe it says specifically, you need not name the employee. I, for the actual journal item, I, I'd have to double check on that, I don't know. It's, it's one that, again, this is kind of what we say, we don't give on the spot, you know, advice to.
So recently, we've always done it that way because anytime there is.
We've done it in some departments and some we haven't.
Related to something that affects their pay or, you know, these are things that are supposed.
Well, I, I'd have to go back and see if we've done any opinions on that in the past for the board, I don't, I don't recall off the top of my head.
And can you let me know, because I, I believe at a meeting, I was told by the new HR person who hadn't worked in HR previously, that you told her that it was okay not to use the name, so if that does, if that does exist in an email or something, could you please let me know, because I'd like to confirm.
Like I said, I'll, I'll have to double check, I'm not sure off the top.
Thank you.
Mr. Cantala Mesa.
Yes.
Oh, I'm.
I'm sorry.
Okay, go ahead.
Mr. Malloy.
Yes.
Start it with my, Ms. Frenchco.
Um. So. Because, because staff in our office has clocked in and immediately went on break violating the same collective bargaining agreement as these employees. And oftentimes people will use an edit sheet if they're a few minutes late, so that it doesn't look like, uh, so it looks like they were there on time and because nobody over in that department accounts for another employee who clocks in on his phone and has no set schedule. Um, I think that it seems like there's, it's unfair to go after some employees and then to allow other employees under the same collective bargaining agreement and in the same department to skate. I have to say no, because I don't think that it's equitable.
Okay, we're having discussion, are we having a discussion on this?
That's, that was the reason why I voted no, and that was past discussion. So now we get to move on to the next agenda item. If you want to follow Robert's rules.
Item number thirty-two is to approve and ratify the personnel action for a three day suspension without pay for employee number two of the Tremble County Water and Sewer Department. The employee will serve the suspension from Thursday, August first to Monday, August fifth.
Motion to approve.
I'll second discussion. Uh, I'll discuss it now at this time, but I think it's a disservice for you to vote yes or no, you didn't sit in on the executive session, you came out here disrespecting the system, disrespecting your job, derelict of your duty to sit in and do your, your job as commissioner to sit in on, on what we just discussed, we just, we just heard from the department head, we just heard from, from Bob, we heard from HR. And where were you? You were sitting out here worrying about your television show, not worrying about the employee, not worrying about the process, not worrying about the taxpayer dollars, I'm talking, not worrying about the taxpayer dollars, it's my time on the floor here now. So how could you come out here with a straight face and look at the public and vote one way or another, when you had absolutely nothing to do with what, with the process we just went through, nothing. And, and what you just said, in the last, no, I'm not, and what you just said in the last relation to, well, we have other employees doing this, that, no, we don't. No, we don't, there, there's six times in a six month period, so you're talking, maybe it happened once or twice, and they could do that. This department could even do the same thing, once, twice, three, up to six times. And so you're over here trying to just throw mud, come out here and try to get your popularity on, on the internet, being derelict of your duty to actually sit in as a commissioner and do a commissioner's job and get paid to be a commissioner. So that's my two cents worth, vote how you want, but if you vote yes or no, you're just basically reaching in and just pulling out a guess, because you weren't part of the process to, to make that decision. It's a disservice to the employee, disservice to the process and every taxpayer that pays your salary. You could have phoned it in.
Since we're talking about it, um, I heard you say Commissioner Frenchco that they can just fill out a time edit sheet. You would be correct in that, however, you leave out half-truth. The other part is that a supervisor has to sign off on that time added sheet. Comp time has to be signed off on by three people, pre-authorized, then signed off by two commissioners. Lisa signs off on every single time edit sheet, I look over all the payroll, I have it, I approve it, and I look it all over. So if we are going to speak in facts, let's speak in facts, let's tell the whole truth, not just a part of it. Also, prior to me coming on to this board, working for this board, excuse me, I just had the sanitary engineer tell me they have always never put the employee's name on a discipline, so you keep wanting to point the finger back at me, but that's just false, Commissioner. Thank you, and also, one more thing, sorry, the point of discipline is not to berate these employees in the public, hence us going to executive session. Who is going to want to come work for this county when they are scrutinized in the public every single day, as I am, as Lisa is, and as you do to other employees in this county? Let's show a little respect for the employees who work here.
Supposed to relate to the topic, so. So I, I will discuss this as well and respond to Commissioner Malloy. We were given all of the paperwork with, that was already signed off on and reckon, and the discipline that was recommended. And it was already explained exactly what happened. Uh, and the reason for these, there are, there are sheets, there are explanations, we had it via email and part of it, we just got today. So if they wanted to continue to discuss, I don't know what, because it didn't relate to, unless they were just repeating and repeating and repeating, they already gave their explanation as to why this, they read the entire manual. I mean, I'm sorry, they, all of these things are there, all of these things are, are what goes on. I mean, these things are, these things are here, it's whatever, I.
Do you not realize the camera catches your lies? You just said, do you have this, do you have it for the second employee, I never got it, you didn't get it till we walked back there, he gave you a piece of paper, you looked at it and you didn't sit there for the discussion about it at all. You went and got water and then you came back out here, you never stepped a foot, other than to go and grab the paper off the desk, is the only part of it you were.
I saw, I, I was clearly sitting.
You don't think the world saw, you got people on your screen right now saying, why were you not in executive session with them?
Right, and I, and you.
Cause you weren't.
And, and that's what I'm saying, is if you're back there looking at my social media instead of actually discussing, I mean, what.
Not looking at your social media, I can see it right here.
Can you continue to discuss the same thing if you've already gone over it and if we've already received it?
You know, disciplining someone is not easy, and this is something, we don't want to get rid of any employees, we don't want to discipline anybody. Right now, we got a lot of good employees out there, but there are policies and procedures we have to follow by. And like she said, we're not here to criticize someone if they make a mistake, we're not here to berate them in the public, to drag them through the streets. If they did a mistake, they deserve their discipline, they're back in good graces and we are rooting for them to do better, we are rooting for them to be here long term. We are rooting for the departments to succeed and we're rooting for the taxpayer dollars to be spent wisely in the future as a community.
So people should be disciplined equally, that's part of the collective bargaining agreement. It says that every person who is part of the same CBA needs to have that CBA applied to them for discipline equally. Um, we have had employees in our office, uh, completely insubordinate.
That's your opinion, not the majority of the board.
I'm talking now, refusing to do things as basic as letting me look at a file. We've had them calling me stupid, making, making horrible disparaging comments about my appearance and ethnicity on social media, one of them was an administrator of a social media page where they actually were participating in partisan political activity, which is not only a violation of the collective bargaining agreement.
Commissioner, call the question, please.
Hey, question's been called, discussion ends.
That, but it's a.
Let's get back to the agenda.
Okay, for item number thirty-two, Mr. Cantala Mesa.
Yes.
Mr. Malloy.
Yes.
Ms. Frenchco.
Because the, um, staff in our office who's in the bargaining agreement never gets disciplined when they violate the same collective bargaining agreement. And because there is an employee over at the, uh, at the same department who, who's not, not tracked.
Yes, no, abstain, Commissioner, please.
Who's, um, time is not accounted for because he clocks in and he doesn't have a set schedule. Um, I just think it's unfair to discipline some people when you're not applying those same rules to people under the same collective bargaining agreement who work in the commissioner's office, so no, because we'd be violating otherwise.
Item number thirty-three, based upon the substance of Tremble County Assistant Prosecuting Attorney Jason Toth's June seventh, twenty twenty-four letter to the Tremble County Board of Commissioners, the Board of Commissioners gives its informed consent, consent to the Tremble County Prosecutor Prosecutor's Office, including Mr. Toth, to represent multiple clients, including Vernon Township, in the review of an RC five-five-three-five-point-zero-eight agreement to resurface Bushnell Campbell Road drafted by Tanya Rogers Esquire on behalf of the Board of Commissioners.
Motion to approve, second the motion.
Mr. Cantala Mesa.
Yes.
Mr. Malloy.
Yes.
Ms. Frenchco.
Uh, yes, and I want to say I feel bad because there were a lot of communities that wanted to do road projects, the townships as, as part of their first choice and they, uh, they were denied, but I'm glad that this, this happened.
And if you went to the workshop yesterday, you would see that Auditor Yoder is reaching out to those ones that had road projects denied, and I did myself last, yesterday also, and they will be given another chance to do that if they chose to choose. Vernon just came up with the process of how to do it and maybe others will follow suit, so. Okay, that concludes our regular business for the agenda today. Anybody have anything for the good of Tremble County?
Um, I do want to announce it, um, that we have three things going on, actually four, we have the Juneteenth Festival this weekend at Quimby Park, it's, um, I believe that there are some activities that start on Thursday, but it's primarily Friday and Saturday, so, and then, uh, there's, there's also parade. And then the Full Spectrum Organization, they have their, uh, event, their festival in downtown Warren on Saturday. Uh, I think that starts off with a parade and ceremony at eleven as well, and then over in Mahoning County, because it's the only place, um, and I have to announce this, that they have a Slavic festival, it's simply Slavic. And, um, it's very well attended and that's Friday and Saturday also. And I really appreciate how our Mahoning Valley, uh, celebrates diversity and culture. And, uh, those three things are going on this weekend and I just want to make sure people knew.
Okay, and I get a notification also of the Mahoning Valley Irish Festival. And that's going to be July nineteenth and twentieth, we got an invitation from the festival committee, um, and we have the information. I'm sure that'll be out there in social media, it'll be at Penguin City Brewing, it's their second time doing it there. I'm sure that'll be out there in social media. It'll be at Penguin City Brewing. It's their second time doing it there again, July nineteenth and twentieth. So. Again, another ethnic festival in the valley. Yes, sir.
I'm Mr. Glenn from City of Niles. Uh, due to recent events in Mahoning County with the explosion and the loss of life. I, I'd like to ask the board to please reach out to their counterparts in Mahoning and, uh, they're going to have to relocate a two hundred and ten foot radius around the affected building. And there's a lot of elderly handicapped people that are going to have to relocate. And if there's anything that Trumbull can do to help. Mayor Tito or the Commissioners of Mahoning Valley, please reach out and see if we can help. Thank you.
Thank you.
Anybody else? Anybody on the phone lines? Okay, hearing none, entertain a motion.
Make a motion to adjourn.
Second.
Mr. Cantala Mesa.
Yes.
Mr. Malloy.
Yes.
Ms. French cow.
Yeah.